The Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting will begin in 10 seconds.
Good evening and welcome to the Commissioners and to those of you who are here in the audience tonight in the Commissioners Auditorium and those of you who are out in TV land. I'll call our meeting to order and we'll... Do we need to take the roll before we do the invocation? So if we'll...
Is it working?
Just make sure they're on. They might have timed out the bottom right button.
Bottom right button.
Meeting is canceled.
I got a one. Does it mean that it's...
Okay, the one with the zero, the very bottom right button?
Yeah, they're on, so I'm not sure why they're saying one.
If it's not one, does it mean that it's on? It's gotta mean that it's on.
Okay, meeting over. I'm here.
I'll just vote by hand, yes.
Okay. If you're here, will you please raise your hand? Thank you. Okay, next we'll have our invocation by Lauren and our pledge by Mike. If you'll please stand.
Dear Laura, thank you for this beautiful day that we have and be with us at this meeting tonight and help us to all have clear, open minds as we go through our meeting and amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
That's a little matter, Chairman.
We have a motion in a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, if you'll vote by raising your hand?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. And next we have a public hearing. Mr. Coburn, if you'll come forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening to the board. Always a pleasure to be with you on this evening. This is an annual recurring request for authorization for transportation funds, 5311 and 5339 administrative funds, also small rural capital funds. And so this year we are making a request before we open public hearing for seeking 186,405 in administrative funding, which covers salaries, administrative costs such as office supplies, things of that nature. Also, that will require a local match of 15% or $32,896. Also, on the capital side, Pitt Area Transit is seeking to replace three vehicles in our fleet. As I have shared in previous meetings, we have replaced 65% of our fleet with two more on the schedule for the current fiscal year and hopefully three the following year, which will bring us pretty close to a fleet replacement over about three funding cycles. That total is $196,900 with a local match of 10% or $19,690. This brings a combined total of $358,305 requested in both state and local funds with a combined local match of $51,996. At this time, if there are no questions, I would request that we move for open to open public hearing.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, nobody's signed up this time.
Okay, then I will declare that closed and we will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve this request.
In a second. I'll vote, please, by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you very much. And public addresses to the board, do we have?
Yes, we have one person signed up, Don Cavallini. He'll come forward, give your name and address, and the attorney will read our public address of the board statement.
I will. Pitt County welcomes...
You'll come on forward.
"Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. Please state your name and address prior to beginning your remarks. Remember that comments are to be directed to the board and not to individuals. Please keep all comments respectful. Profanity or personal attacks will not be permitted pursuant to the rules, boards of procedure..." Rules of procedure, I will keep your time at three minutes per speaker. If you're speaking for a group, I will extend your time to five minutes noting that your group may stand. Know that the Commissioners will listen to your comments at this time and may have county staff follow up with you after the meeting. Follow up as appropriate may be reported back to the full board by the manager at a future meeting. When you hear the timer indicate that your time is up, please conclude your remarks. Thank you.
So I am representing Coalition Against Racism in Pitt County as the co-chair, and I assure you I will be very appropriate. And I don't think I need the five minutes, but I appreciate very much the opportunity to share with you.
And if you'll let us know your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Let me find my glasses. Oh, here they are. My name is Don Cavallini, and I live at 101 Lancaster Drive, Greenville. So I'm here to share with you our concern for as much accountability and transparency as is possible with regard to law enforcement. We assure you it is worth the investment. One only has to take note of the tragic events in Fort Worth, Texas, to know how important it is to have some record other than eyewitness reports. So we're hoping you will receive these remarks in the spirit in which I mean to deliver them. And it's in the interest of both the average Pitt County resident as well as the very sheriff's deputies themselves that they have a record of what happens whenever there's an encounter with law enforcement. I wanted to say that although I was not present at the meeting when the more recent Commissioners were sworn in, I do have a copy of the article. It says, "Fresh faces and ready to serve." And it addressed specifically Commissioners Anne Huggins and Chris Nunley. And that was on December 10th. The only reason I was not present for that meeting is that we were outside the city council meeting asking that the city of Greenville be more accountable for their law enforcement. And we asked for a civilian complaint review board that's both elected and independent of law enforcement. But tonight it's about body cameras, and I would just ask you to pay mind to both the advantage for the deputy as well as the resident. There is no cost that should be saved or spared for us to be safe. Law enforcement is hired to protect and serve, and I know the sheriff wants this. I watched her at the last meeting, and I couldn't believe how agonized her face looked. If this had been Neil Elks, it would have been passed already. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I don't think so. Okay, is that it? Public addresses to the board. Okay, we're ready for our items for report. And Scott Darnell, if you'll come forward, welcome back.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. I look forward to coming back. Well, thank you. I want to give you a quick update, and we'll talk a little bit about what the Industrial Development Commission is doing. Lots going on, so I want to report it to you and look forward to continue this ongoing. You know, I started three weeks ago here, 9/23. The reflector did some great articles. One of the things I talked about was position of strength. I think you'll hear some of that tonight and how we've progressed from the 23rd, three weeks later. You know, I've been to a lot of meetings, public and private, and leaned a lot of feedback. We did that before I joined here. That's going to be important, ongoing. You know, last Friday I told someone, "Everybody wants to talk to me about the past." And I said, "Why is this?" And she said, "Well, they probably don't understand the direction for the future." So I look forward to partnering with you for the future because none of us can change the past. So let's move forward. We've got a bright future ahead of us. You know, several things happened on a national level in economic development. Talked to colleagues, great friends, and this tells what happened. You know, again, education, workforce development are key. You know, we've got tremendous institutions here. You know, the thing is the community is lacking, a lot of them capital and connected networks to build a strong entrepreneurial ecosystem. I don't think that's the case here. We'll talk about that more in the future. You know, the global forces related to technological, demographic, and economic changes, you know, trade policies, automation, global competition, you know, understanding those things and how they play on the local level. And the last one, I'll read this verbatim, "Economic development is facing increased scrutiny in almost every community. Proactive communications with hometown audience, sharing information, listening needs to be a bigger part of the EDO daily activities." So when we get to this update, I want you to keep in mind these trends, and they're going to be a paramount in each area we touch at the Industrial Development Commission moving forward. You know, organizationally, we're making some changes with the staff, we're more efficient in their areas. You know, we've got better delegation of roles, how we work together, and how we're more efficient in everything we do. We're seeing great promise from that in a short time. You know, I support the staff. We've got very capable staff. They do their job, my jobs, to support them, but that frees me up to look at different opportunities for us moving forward, so we look forward to continue that. You know, we talk a lot about team. If you see us, you'll probably see more than one of us together if our time allows. It's easier if we're together making decisions rather than somebody coming back reporting their input. So you're seeing a lot of conference calls, video chats, we're making decisions together. We're a small office, but we're effective when we all make decisions together, and that's helping us move a little faster toward our mission. You know, the last thing is technology objectives with strategic natures is going to be utilized in all areas. And here's some of those examples moving forward. You know, on the business recruitment side, our marketing, I'm comfortable where we are. About a month ago, we were the lead partner with the Economic Development Partnership at a consultant event with seven consultants, you know, one-on-one contact and relationships with them. We're going to continue that. We've got three more marketing events planned throughout till the end of the year. Kelly does a tremendous job with those, and we're seeing some results through those. Site selection consultants are a big part of what we do. We usually go to them, but we're going to change that. They're coming to us. We have our first one booked for the end of October, and that consultant will be spending three days in this market. We've got these phenomenal assets like ECU, Pitt Community College, and the rest of the community. They need to see it, they need to understand it, they need to touch it, and they need to feel it. The only way we do that is to bring them here. You know, our goal is to do that at the end of the month, and then we'll do another one hopefully from the end of the year. And then we'll work up to a larger event, five or six at one time. We'll kick one key sector. We'll have our resources from education, public and private better aligned by that point, and we'll figure out, you know, how to better present and use these market opportunities to move our mission forward. So that's ongoing. I think we're going to have a lot of success for this, and again, this better prepares our partners to react to the markets with us in a more timely fashion. You know, the activity continues to increase. One of the challenges is foreign direct investment. They keep pulling back. You know, people don't make decisions as quickly as they used to. We're going into the third quarter. A lot of this decision may get pushed to fourth, first quarter. Next year's an election year. But the good thing, we're blended a lot domestically and internationally. Our project activity is increasing in advanced manufacturing, food processing, biopharma, and agropharma. So a good mixture is important, but you know, decisions are beyond our control, but just something we're seeing nationally, and I hope some more stability with trade agreements will calm that down. You know, the other important message we're sending to the market is ability to close the deal. And incentives are part of economic development whether we like it or not. We look at incentives as it makes a good deal better, not a bad deal good. We've got limited amount of fiscal resources, so either we outspend them or we outsmart them. Well, we're going to outsmart them, and we outsmart them by improving the process. And that process, the day, the process starts the day we get the call. And discussion with legal and other partners is how do we respond better? How are we better prepared? How are we better to put our assets on the table sooner? And that works in conjunction with the site selection consultants, marking our assets, and improving the process. And that's ongoing and will continue, but I think we're making good progress there. You know, retention and expansion, you know, some of the discussions with you, there's a concern, we've got a tight labor market. We could say it's a full labor market. How do we successfully recruit, but how do we protect those industries that are here? How do we not compete with ourselves? Well, a great thing between the Development Commission and our partnership with you is we control a lot of policy and we control a lot of competitiveness, because that financial incentives, what part of all deal closing, is controlled by both bodies, and that partnership's been in place for decades. You know, the way we're going to do this is by the end of the year, our team's going to target about 20, 25 companies. We're going to go one-on-one with an intention of finding that labor analysis as well as the gap analysis. We'll put it against our software, and then we'll put sample projects out in the market and see how they react. We started that process today. There's two projects, real projects. How would we fill the labor here? What is the market doing? What is the turnover rates? And we'll intentionally do this exercise for the end of the year. And then we can back up with legal, and we'll put policies and competitiveness in place to make sure we're not only competing with ourselves, but we're getting the highest return, but also we're protecting those local industries while recruiting at the same time. You know, that's the way we do it, that's the way we need to do it. A lot of you have given good feedback. How do we do this? That process will be ongoing. You know, the second thing is local projects continue to increase, expansion projects. I think we've got a good balance and synergy there. I like where we're going. We'll continue watching that process unfold. You know, the second thing is the technology platform. You know, our databases weren't allowing us to share the way we need to internally or externally. You know, referrals are a big part of tracking metrics. How can we better use our partners to solve community problems? We're just going to change the software pattern, I mean, software project. So we've demoed it, we like it, we'll move that forward at the next board meeting. We'll get that software implemented, and then we'll be able to track data and share it better and track these trends over time and share them with our partners. You know, the next thing is entrepreneurship. Tomorrow's the Pirate Challenge, a tremendous event at ECU. We're the lead sponsor of that. We're going to have 120 student groups competing to create businesses. Let's make sure those businesses stay in Pitt County. In addition to that, Ms. Gallagher said early in the year in one meeting, you know, industrial oftentimes starts with entrepreneurship. I totally agree with that. We're going to talk some more about that. We've got some great opportunities for entrepreneurship coming up. You know, another thing is marketing and communications. We had budgeted position. Marketing communications, again, from a best practice standpoint, is something we need to do more of. Better marketing communications means more people call me with opportunities, so there is marketing communications. We want our website, our presentations, our social media, our press releases, and the intentional focus on communicating ought to be aligned. And the way you do that's a different ways, but we honestly, we've got too much going on, we're moving too quick, we're building too big of a platform. One position cannot do this. So we've elected to partner with IGO Creative, our marketing firm, and they're going to take our marketing communications over. We're rolling a new website out soon, but we're going to build a platform not only for us but our partners to tell our message a little better. We've done this in other communities. We've won national and global awards, and then we'll use Kyle, our videographer, to help reinforce that of telling our story, not only at the Development Commission, with our partners, with our strategy, and find our better ways to communicate to the community and be intentional with that focus. And that actually starts tonight with me being here, so there's a plan for that in place. You know, in closing, you know, a few things I want us to always remember going forward. If anyone in your district wants to know more about economic development, why things are happening, why things aren't, tell them, call me. I'd love to sit down with them. I'll use data. I make most of my decisions or base a lot of my decisions on data, and we have that data, and I'd love to share that data. But let's make sure that those people wanting to learn more or have questions get the right response, the accurate response. We're willing to do that, and we ask you to promote us doing that. You know, another thing, you interact with a lot of companies and individuals out there. You know, always, if they're adding one job or investing $1, ask them to call us before they do that. Average companies know 10% of what's available to them. It's our job to figure out the other 90%. We don't want to leave money on the table. There's billions of dollars in the state of North Carolina to help companies grow. Let's make sure our companies are taking advantage of that, and that process starts by just giving us a call. We'll sit down, and we can quickly tell you if there's opportunities locally, nationally, or federally to move those opportunities forward. You know, last part, we're going to have a dynamic plan, and that means we're all of Pitt County. And a lot of these systems put in place isn't only for the Development Commission, it's to grow with us as we expand our portfolio or our assistance or the intentional reason for what we're created for, and that's to bring prosperity to all Pitt County. And we want to thank you for being a critical part of our team. You know, like I've been saying in the past three weeks, the only thing we need to focus on success, once you create success, everything else will take care of itself. Thank you.
I think all of us speak for everyone. Thank you so much. I don't, we have some wonderful leadership in Pitt County, in almost all of our departments, not almost, but all of our departments, and here with the leadership at the office here. And it's really nice to bring someone on board who fits right in and is probably going to pull us forward, and we appreciate that so much. Thank you for hitting the ground running. I mean, I called him about taking him to introduce him to some mayors, and he had already been to visit those particular towns and those mayors, and he said, "But I'll come if you think I need to." I said, "No, have you got an appointment this morning?" He said, "I do." I said, "Go." So anyway, we do appreciate you and thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And we really appreciate the report.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Next, Mr. Green, if you'll come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair. It's good to be with you tonight. Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, Madam Attorney, Madam Clerk. It's good to be with y'all.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Is your microphone on?
Pull the mic down a little bit.
Is that good? Okay.
That's better. Yes, thank you.
It's good to be with y'all tonight. Tonight I'm presenting the September 2019 tax collection report. For the year-to-date, our collection rate is 62.93%. That is roughly, one year ago was 63.69%, so we're down a little bit in our current collections. As far as all other collection remedies, we still pursue all outstanding taxes using all of the enforcement remedies available through the North Carolina general statutes. With your report being presented to you, my recommendation is you to approve the report as submitted.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
May I make a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. We'll vote by hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your report. And Brian, you're next up.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. It's with my pleasure to report to you that Pitt County has been awarded the Government Finance Officers Association's Outstanding Achievement in Popular Annual Financial Reporting. This is our fourth year in a row that we have received this award. As mentioned earlier tonight, one of our big objectives is transparency, and what our PAFR allows us to do is to take our financial information from the prior fiscal year and convert it into a much easier to read and follow format, and for that, we have been recognized nationally as an award-winning document in governmental accounting and finance.
And everyone doesn't get this. That's, I mean, it's, thank you very much for the job that you do, and we are very proud of it. Thank you. And do we need a motion to accept the award?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you. And next, Brian, you're up again.
I'm also glad to report tonight, also, the PAFR that we shrink down to make easier, or the PAFR that we shrink to make easier to read is based off of our comprehensive financial report, other known as our PAFR, and the Government Finance Officers Association has also awarded us outstanding award for transparency in reporting for our annual audit. This is our 29th year in a row for winning this award. So our document that we, that we build our PAFR from is another testament to our ability to be transparent and to put all our financial data available for all of Pitt County to see and understand.
Again, the contributions of your staff and you are amazing for this county, and you do it with, it appears to be such ease, but we know the job is not that easy, so thank you again. And one more?
This is our monthly financial report for the, for the month of September. We are a quarter of the fiscal year. Right now, on the general fund side, we have collected 35.6% of anticipated revenues, and we have spent 24.4%. The 24.4% is slightly higher percentage than where we were at this time last year, which was at 23.1%, but primarily that increase is due to the fact that we bought the Warren property back in July. But that still keeps us underneath the 25% mark for the quarter, so general fund-wise on our spending, we are right where we should be budgetarily. In our solid waste fund, at the quarter mark, we have brought in 43.52% of anticipated revenues, and we have only spent 20.89%. So in our solid waste fund, we are well below the 25% for the quarter. Unless you guys have any questions about the general fund and the solid waste fund, I would ask that you do approve the report.
Okay, a motion to approve.
Second.
In a second? Okay, now let's vote, please. Passes. Thank you, Brian, for a good job. Appreciate it. Good leadership. Okay, stop.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Couple things to report. Next meeting dates, November 4th and 18th, you'll have a 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. meeting respectfully. We'd like to ask James Rhodes if you'd come to the podium for a moment. I'd like to recognize you for an achievement. James was recognized at the NCAPA, and that's the North Carolina American Planning Association Conference this past week, and I'd just like to read a little bit about the award he received. It's the North Carolina Marvin Collins Awards Program, and for that, he received the Robert Ryman Professional Achievement Award. And basically, this is presented to an APA North Carolina member who's contributed significantly to the planning profession through practice, teaching, or writing. And the write-up on James is as follows. Said in presenting this award to James Rhodes, "The nominator stated that James truly exemplifies the criteria of the Robert Ryman Professional Achievement Award. It is noted that Mr. Rhodes has a 30-year-plus career of contributions to local government and East Carolina University. Nominators felt that James was ahead of his time for the inclusion of health factors and planning programs. James was a crusader in securing of grants for health and wellness programs in the county. He also presented his concepts in health and planning to the U.S. and national conferences." James was praised for his collaboration and collaborating partnerships, particularly in his master plans and grant applications. He was also recognized for his mentoring of young planning students at ECU and his legacy of former students holding planning positions through Eastern North Carolina. In summary, through his strong philosophy of collaborative and visionary thinking, James has enhanced the understanding of the planning profession across disciplines in county departments, brought benchmark practices to Pitt County, and influenced the next generation of planning professionals. So we'd like to congratulate you for this.
We went to Raleigh to see him get his award, and it really is more than just a pat on the back. You've done a good job, and he's very, very respected by his, by people in the profession.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Scott, again, thank you for the support of the board, and certainly, we've got a great staff here. Other departments, my, I always have to speak kindly to my county attorney. She keeps me out of a lot of trouble. I probably wouldn't have been here this long. And my staff, again, staff is great. They got me on this one because I had no idea. They nominated me for this, and it just goes a long way in saying, "You've got a very good planning department here. It's not just me. By any means, your planning staff could run this place tomorrow without me." So that's a good thing to say. So again, thank you for your support, and I really appreciate the recognition.
If we can ask Mike Emery to come forward from the PIO studio? And while we, while we call on him, I'll, I'll read the next item, and then we'll come back to the recognition of Mike Emery. On the next item, we've had a request to possibly in the future look at a three-way stop request for Blackjack Simpson Road, Stokes Town Road, and St. John's Road. At this point in time, I think we're just going to kind of keep an eye on this and see if that warrants a possible NCDOT study, but at this point in time, we're just going to note that for possible future designation. Mike, if you'll come to the podium, we have another special recognition of Mr. Emery, our Public Information Officer for Pitt County. Mike has concluded a program with FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, in which he attended, I believe, three one-week courses to become a certified master public information officer. And this is, I believe, there's only 65 of these in the nation, if I have my stats right.
Currently, yes.
Currently. And this is a rather rigorous program that he went through and will very much enhance his ability to represent Pitt County in the media and the interaction he'll have. So I'd like to... the interaction he'll have. So, I'd like to congratulate you on this and your dedication to the profession.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for all you do for us and in the state, too.
It's a, it's a, it was actually a year-long program that required three weeks of being on campus at the Emergency Management Institute in Emmitsburg, Maryland. Um, so, uh, but very rewarding experience and proud to be a member of the fold.
Great. I had two other items real quick, Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One deals with, uh, we just wanted to report out, um, the county attorney I was discussing regarding the, um, Biden matter with, the legal matter with the UNC Board of Governors. Just wanted to note for the public record, that a settlement agreement has been signed by all parties in litigation involving Pitt County, Biden, ECU, and UNC. Joint press release was issued last week outlining the terms. I'm sure this is, obviously, it's been in the press and the media, and, um, we wanted just to also state that the lawsuit has been dismissed, and wanted to enter that into the record, and just to close our door publicly, uh, with that matter.
And your county personnel has worked very hard on this for over six months, and had a, um, Mike serves on the hospital board, uh, too, so it's been a, um, a long time getting here, but it's right where we wanted it to be, so, thank you for sharing that.
One other item, just wanted, just to, as an items to report, have, um, worked with the sheriff's office on the request regarding, um, last year in the budget process, they'd asked for an attorney, and that unfortunately was not able to be approved as part of the budget process, but the, the sheriff has, um, um, proposed, and HR and myself have signed off on, creating a staff-level attorney out of the vacant, um, chief position that she has, and so she'll be moving forward on it in the future. Just want to bring that to your attention, so, since it was in the budget, wasn't approved, but we've been able to work it out by reclassifying an existing vacant position at near the same grade level.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the items for consent. Yep, a motion and a second. We'll vote, please, by hand. Okay, and now we move on to our items for decision. Um, James, you're back up.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, tonight, we have two members of the DOT staff, Jeff Kabinus and Casey Whitley, here to discuss, uh, DOT's plans for the NC forty-three south improvements. And if you've driven in that area, you know there's a lot of growth going on, and a lot of schools that have crossing traffic through that area. Um, before they come up, I did want to mention to you also that planning staff is embarking upon its next corridor study, and that's gonna be on NC forty-three south. So, it's, these two are kind of running side by side as far as timing, and we'll be conducting our plan over the next year or so. I think they'll come up to tell you the road won't be built in that time period. So, we hope to have our planning ahead of some of the other improvements that are going on in that particular area. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff.
Well, good evening, uh, Madam Chairman and Board. Appreciate y'all letting us come tonight. Um, just as a, uh, kind of dovetail on what James was talking about, this is the forty-three corridor, um, and just to bring you up as a review, um, this is, project starts where the fire tower project would stop. So, the, the project that we have along Fire Tower goes through the intersection there, um, and then this one would tie into it right around the Speedway going south towards Conley. Um, and so, that's, that's kind of where we're at. We had a, um, we started on this project, uh, a couple of years ago, uh, when it was first funded. We've taken it to the point where we're, um, we've gone to the public. If you remember back in March, we had a public meeting about that. Um, and so, Casey is the project manager after this, and so, we're gonna let him take over and kind of go through the project and give you some of the specifics on it. Uh, and you'll see there, that's the, uh, study location where we're at. Uh, so, that's, that's the whole corridor that we're, that we're talking about tonight.
Okay.
My name's Casey Whitley with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Like Jeff's, like Jeff said, I'm the project engineer for U fifty-nine ninety-one, which is the widening of NC forty-three, um, from Bell's Fork to Worthington Mills Road or Hollywood intersection. Um, so, just a quick rundown on the project. Currently, the current average daily trips along this section of road is eighty-eight hundred vehicles per day to seventeen thousand two hundred vehicles per day, depending on where you're at. And in the design year of twenty forty, we're going anywhere from twelve thousand one hundred vehicles per day to twenty-seven three hundred vehicles per day. Um, the proposed project will improve safety, reduce congestion, and improve travel times along NC forty-three. Um, and in addition to just widening the road, we are looking at two intersections that we are currently signalized that could be a roundabout as well. Those intersections are NC forty-three at Signature Drive and NC forty-three at Worthington and Mills Road near DH Conley. So, here, we've got a typical section of what NC forty-three would look like from, uh, where the project begins up near Bell's Fork to Blue Bill Drive, which, if you're not familiar with Blue Bill Drive, is where Unity Church is. Um, so, what we're looking at as a typical section is, you've got a two-foot curb and gutter section, fourteen-foot outside lane, and a twelve-foot inside lane with a twenty-three-foot raised median, and same on the other side. And in this section, we've got a five-foot sidewalk. Um, the city of Greenville, part of this is inside city limits, and it goes outside the city limits for a little stretch, then ends back up in city limits. They expressed interest in having the sidewalk all the way, at least up to Unity Church.
They're gonna take care of that. Yep, the city's gonna do that section.
Yes, yes, ma'am, and, um, you know, that's all depending municipal agreement and everything like that.
But they have said-
Yes, they've, they've expressed interest.
Right.
So, and we've had the conversation with them. Um, and the next section is basically the exact same typical section, going from Unity Church or Blue Bill Drive all the way down to the intersection at Hollywood Crossroads, or Mills Road, Worthington Road, however you refer to it. Um, and that's the same cross-section minus the sidewalk. Um, just it gets outside the city limits, and that's how it, how it is. Um, initially, we had a ditch, uh, ditch section from Hardy Creek to Worthington Mills Road, but we decided to cut that out of our plan because of right-of-way impacts. We were looking at approximately a hundred fifty foot of a proposed right-of-way out there. Already, we've got a hundred feet of existing right-of-way, so we would have to get fifty additional feet of right-of-way. And with keeping it curb and gutter, we were able to reduce the right-of-way impacts down to about a hundred twenty-five feet, so maybe a hun- twenty-five feet of additional right-of-way needed. But that, just keep in mind, that doesn't account of any easements that we might, would need once we start getting into drainage features or utility features that we're not sure how the project would impact. But that was part of the reason to continue with the curb and gutter all the way down. Then, also, when we did go to the public, we presented two alternatives to the public. We presented a symmetrical widening option and a western widening option, and both of these options had the exact same typical as what's shown on the screen, so there wasn't any variance from that. Um, the symmetrical option widens equally on both sides of the road, down the existing center line of NC forty-three, and the western widening option holds the eastern wa- right-of-way line that is near the transmission poles that have been recently installed out there, and widens on the western side away from them poles. Um, we initially were, did scope it for three alternatives, also to look at the eastern widening side, but the poles coming in kind of threw a wrench in that, uh, that plan, when looking at the, the study that side. And then, in addition to the different alternatives we presented, at the public meeting, we presented a roundabout option at Signature Drive. Um, and just to give you a little background, what we're looking for in our design year, which is typically twenty years out, in this case, our design year is twenty forty, we're looking at a level service of D as being what we're designing to. And in this case, you can see in twenty forty, we're reaching a level service A with signalized, a level service B and roundabout, and really, there's not much difference in either of them. I've got a chart on the side here to kind of show you what that means. Um, at level service A, typically ten seconds or less at that signal waiting, and at a unsignalized, ten to fifteen seconds. So, I mean, really, not much difference here. Um, the signature drive option functions optimally for the design year with the roundabout, um, but by providing the roundabout, it keeps us from having, having to provide this bulbout that you can see at the signature drive that is just north of Signature Drive, because we wouldn't be able to accommodate bus traffic or tractor-trailer traffics wanting to make a U-turn here. And so, the roundabout would be able to accommodate that. Um, and also, the roundabout helps remove these driveways that are directly tying into NC forty-three, and we would be able to provide them, um, access with a service road, which reduces the amount of potential conflicts coming into NC forty-three, and would make, make it safe, safer through this stretch of highway. Um, then can continue on the roundabout option at Mills Road, Worthington Road, Hollywood Crossroads. Um, the roundabout option performs better in terms of the level of service that I mentioned on the previous slide. Um, you're looking at a level service B compared to a level service D at the signalized intersection. And the, also, the roundabout helps line up Mills Road better without having to re-line, realign Mills and Worthington Road. Here, with the signalized intersection, you can see we're realigning Mills Road and potentially taking out this home here, and then realigning Worthington Road here. And if you look over, on the roundabout, the angle comes in, and you're able to reali- put in intersection and get rid of this angle of Mills Road without having to realign the road itself. Um, like Jeff mentioned, we did have, uh, some public comments and public meetings, and we also held a, um, meeting with the Principal Moore of DH Conley and representatives with the Pitt County Board of Education on March twelfth of this year. And from that meeting, Principal Moore, um, expressed support for both roundabout options that we, um, presented to the public. Then, a week later, on March nineteenth of this year, we had a public meeting held at the Pitt County Center for Aging. I think that's the name of it. And, um, at that public meeting, we received comments evenly split in favor of, uh, the symmetrical widening and western widening, along with the same with the roundabout options, you know, equally in favor and equally against. Um, and then, also, from the public meeting, we did incorporate some changes in where we might potentially put some U-turn burbs along our design, and so we took different comments into account from this meeting. So, with that said, the project team recommendations is we propose the western widening alternative would reduce conflict intersections. Um, the one reason that we're looking at this, reduce, uh, this proposed western widening alternative is, um, the utility transmission lines, if you've ridden down that highway, you, they're pretty noticeable. And, um, if we encroach on these utility easement where these poles are, we don't know how many additional residential relocations we might, would have, because we might have to move some poles, which would in turn affect existing property owners along that corridor. Um, also, the western widening alternative impacts fewer overall parcels along the project limits. Um, approximately now, we've got eighty-two that, parcels that we would affect with the western widening compared to a hundred thirty-three with the symmetrical option. So, that's fif- approximately fifty-one, um, parcel difference. And then, another reason that we are proposing this is a large portion would be built, a large portion of the new road would be built on a new location, which should help the maintenance of the traffic while construction's going on. Once, while the new section's roads being built, people would be able to continue on the existing road, and then, once the new road, we could switch traffic over to the new road, and that would all be, um, things looked at to help the maintenance of traffic perform. Um, also, the project team's recommending both roundabout options at Worthington Road and Mills Road and at Signature Drive. Um, both roundabouts function well in the design year of twenty forty. Roundabouts are the safest intersection we can build. Roundabout total crashes are reduced by about fifty percent. Fatal and injury crashes are reduced by seventy-six percent, and front-end impact crashes are reduced by seventy-five percent. So, basically, people can't just blow through a roundabout like they could, uh, signalize intersection. Um, and like I mentioned on the Worthington and Mills roundabout, the ge- geometry of that intersection works better where, with the angle, we can correct the angle of Mills Road without having to realign the road itself, um, Worthington and Mills Road. Also, we would look at the roundabout as a traffic calming device near DH Conley High School. It would slow people down coming into that intersection. And also, another reason is roundabouts are cheaper to maintain over time, because we're not going out having to pay for electricity, keep the signal up and running and everything. And then, if there was a power outage, the roundabouts gonna function the same as anything. You're not pulling resources from the sheriff's office or from the Highway Patrol to go out there to help direct traffic, and especially if power were to get out, say, three o'clock in the afternoon, it would probably be, be a nightmare with hope and DH Conley getting out at the same time. Um, in addition to that, we're proposing to do the curb and gutter throughout the project limits. This will reduce the design speed for the entire project, and, um, also, this should help reduce the amount of right-of-way impacts we have along the corridor. And then, the last bullet there is, we're proposing, proposing to remove the intersection of NC forty-three and Bell's Fork Road near Herman Garris Road. Um, it just kind of, Bell's Fork kind of lies off of NC forty-three, and it's one less conflict point that we're looking at reducing by doing this. And it's not really gonna affect people's travel time much, um, having to go to Herman Garris a couple hundred feet up the road to make that, that movement. So, the next steps of the project, current as October fourteenth, which is today. So the next steps of the project current as October 14th, which is today. We're looking at getting the environmental document completed of 2020 next year. Right now, as of right now, right-of-way acquisition is set to begin in 2021 and construction's set to begin in 2024. So with that said, do we have any questions or comments?
Anyone will start down here and go around.
No question.
Alex, Mary?
I have a question. Since this is new construction around the road and you have some schools out there with residents, what is the, your policies that relates to lighting? Because when you go down that road and as you age or as you become this, uh, with vision and stuff, it's hard to see, and students walk all the time, parents drop them off, not necessarily in the right place. What's your possibility or what is the policy as it relates to lighting for safety of the students and the residents out that way?
On a rural road like that, we don't do lighting. Matter of fact, the only time we do any lighting would be like on interstate, at inter, a big interchange, we do lighting in those areas. But other lighting like that comes from, like in the city, it comes from agreement, I believe, with Greenwell and Grim Utilities.
Does, does a solar light, is solar lighting, uh, cost maintenance, like he was talking about electric, you have to, does that cost once you put the pole up, that's it, right?
I'm not very familiar with that, to be honest with you. I would imagine that you have to have batteries, and at some point, those batteries would probably wear out, and you'd have to replace them, but I'm not sure about cost.
I was just curious, because my grandchildren go out there and it's always traffic, traffic, traffic.
Chris?
Yeah, so I was just noticing that it looks like the terminus is kind of near Mills Road and a little bit beyond it. There's a pretty sizable soccer complex that's pretty busy on Saturdays. What are the perceived impacts of this project on accessibility and ingress egress during special events out there?
Sure, the project stops a little short of that. When our design engineers initially looked at it, they had a traffic island that extended past the driveway and knowing about the, my kids grew up playing out there, I told them, I said, we need to shy that up right now. So you'll still be able to turn left and in and out of there at the soccer complex. Now, there is, James mentioned the 43 corridor is being looked at, it's being looked at by the county planners, also by the rural planning organizations that do the transportation planning, and there are projects already in our system that takes 43 basically all the way, tying it into 17. So it's something that's going to be looked at in the future. So in the future, the next project that comes along is going to, going to be dealing with that intersection.
Okay. Tom, Tom, anything?
Is Bell's Fork still scheduled to be closed down there, Harris Teeter? Terminated?
No, it, it's right there where the, um,
Okay.
The, uh,
Well, you got Fire Tower and then you got, got Bell's Fork, which is between Hardee's and?
Not that one. We're talking about the one that lies off?
I know that, but I'm talking about, I'm talking about the other, I'll get to that one, I'm talking about the other end. Is it still scheduled to be closed?
No, no.
Okay. How are you going to get out of Bell's Fork? How would I turn left to go south there?
At Herman Garris?
Yeah, well, no, at Bell's Fork. How do I turn south to go down 43?
On the north? Good.
I live in, I live in Cherry Oaks. This impact, this impacts my neighborhood.
Right, there'd be a lot.
There's 450 homes there and about 450 to 500 homes additionally in that direct area. So anybody wanting to go down 43 south, I'm trying to figure out what kind of problems we have. How do we get, we can't go out Fire Tower because if we get to Fire Tower, we're not going to be able to turn left, we got to go right.
There's a, there's a signal there at the Hardee's and the Speedway and the Fire Tower projects, you'd be able to turn left there to see.
There's going to be a signal there?
Yes, sir.
But not one now, there's not one now, they're going to have, add one.
That's correct.
So what's going to happen at Fire Tower?
Which part of Fire Tower?
Huh?
I'm, I'm not understanding which exact.
What happens at Fire Tower? I mean, if you're going to have a signal at that Bell's Fork in 43, and then you're going to have a signal at Fire Tower, I mean, they're a rock throw park. Traffic backs up for, all the way down to that other new light that they put in.
They'll, they'll be timed, they'll be timed together. They'll have to have it where it's timed where you're not going to be able to turn green at, at a Fire Tower and then go to 43 and stop right there at Hardee's, it'll have to be timed.
Okay. I'm concerned also about on the other end of Bell's Fork where you're going to come out and you're going to terminate what you call the Y. I can see why you're going to do that, but then that's going to force traffic to turn onto Herman Garris. The way we talked about it the last time when I was still on the RPO is that you're going to have to come out there and then you're going to have to turn right to go in towards town, and then you're going to have a turnaround, one of the, what do you call those things where you widen it?
You turn bulb.
Yeah. So is that still going to be the case there?
We've got one at Herman Garris, just, you know, whatever.
Yeah, we've got, that's the case.
That's what we refer to a reduced conflict intersection.
Do you not see that being a, a, a traffic problem? Again, traffic already backs up a long ways, and as time goes on, with your traffic getting more and more, I see that to be a problem. I, also down at, um,
It's a mess.
Pardon?
It's a mess there.
Well, it is a mess. I see, I just see a problem with all these homes trying to get out of these intersections, and it's going to change, change so dramatically, and you're not going to be able to go left anymore places where you can go left now. You're going to have to take a right, you're going to, if you get out on Fire Tower, you're going to have to take a right, go almost all the way down to the, to the roundabout, or if you're going to have another turnout on Fire Tower. Confuse in our neighborhood and, and try to get out of the, out of it right now, and then envision, put yourself introspect, what's it going to be like when you have your plans go into effect? I see us having even a more difficult time getting out here. So, um, did we not also talk about more roundabouts than what you're talking about here at one point?
That was the two main one with the intersection. We, um, we kind of pushed the design team to really look like what you're talking about at several of the rows that came into 43. From, from their data, from their traffic reports of what's happening now, of the turning movements, and then the projection of the future, the design that they've, that they've presented and worked on for us, they, is supposed to work, and it's supposed to work well.
I'd like to also ask one, one favor for you to consider. Right now, if you go on Fire Tower and you happen to be in the rain and you're going down the, the road, you better have pretty good eyes. My eyes are 70 years old and they don't see quite like they did when I was 18. And you can't hardly see the island or the, the center section because there's not enough contrast. Can you paint it or do something to make reflections, put a line there? Do something on the new roads to where, to where it's more visible to drivers? Because I dare say even people that got good 18-year-old eyes might have trouble, troubles at nighttime when it's raining.
Right, and you're, you're talking, you're referring to the small islands on Fire Tower coming up the?
Well, I'm talking about Fire Tower, but I'm also talking about this new section where you're talking about having an island down the whole, the whole length of it.
Okay.
Be nice to be able to see it and not run up on it by accident. I can see a car running up, in fact, I'm surprised more cars don't run up on it, lose control and then cause an accident because they couldn't see. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Anything, anyone else? Do we need to, um,
Yes.
Have a motion to support this?
Yes, for the chairman.
Motion to support.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Anything else? Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand or left, either one. Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, next, we have John Demery, if you'll come forward, John.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. Here to talk a little bit about ECVC and their request to increase the tipping fee for co-mingle. ECVC has been processing co-mingle, which I call household recyclables, your glass, bottles, cans, and those types of material since 1995 for the county. ECVC, as you know, employs 74 people and full and part-time people at the recycling center. Of those, 48 of them are people with disabilities. Although the operation and total lifecycle costs are somewhat greater than it would be if it was more mechanicalized system, it provides jobs for persons who would otherwise have difficult finding work. The revenue from the co-mingle recyclables have never been as high as the cost to ECVC. However, the profit from the sale of other separate recyclables offset the loss on co-mingles. ECVC is losing substantial amount of money right now with the reduction in other incomes that are occurring. The markets are, are at an all-time low, so there are financial and social and environmental reasons to make sure that ECVC continues to maintain its recycle operations. If ECVC were to stop recycling, then we would be sending that material to the landfill, and that would increase the solid waste fee that we pay at the landfill. Back in February 2009, Pitt County started paying ECVC a tipping fee for co-mingle. Tipping fee lasted about six months, markets got better, and the highest we paid was $18 per ton. At the November 11, 2016 Board of Commissioners meeting, a $25 tipping fee was approved. Since then, recycling has become more challenging and the values of recyclables have decreased. ECVC is requesting a tipping fee be increased by $9.50 per ton, which would, the new tipping fee would be $34.50 per ton, which is still slightly lower than what we send on the garbage to Republic's facility. The estimated yearly cost will increase by about $50,000, and we're anticipating a cost of $182,500. ECVC and us are working together to try to, um, get the word out on, on contamination of recyclables, to get their costs down, and hopefully with this, the price of recyclables will go up some. So I'm asking that y'all give us approval to increase their tipping fee by $9.50 per ton, and the new tipping fee would go back in effect July 1st. We go back and pay them the difference that they have billed us. And I'll be glad to answer any question. I have John Coward with ECVC here, if y'all have any questions for him.
Any questions? Yes.
Just want to make, make a comment as a fellow to John's prior conversation or presentation regarding solid waste recycling. Obviously, the enterprise fund is a fund that operates like a business, and these type of things, the increased costs are what is, continues to drive us toward the bottom line that is, is a challenge. I do recommend the, the contract be amended for this tonnage increase of $9.50, but it, we're going to continue to, within this enterprise fund, have these challenges, and we're, we're obviously putting a whole lot more light and focus on this fund this year, and may have, may need to talk at budget time further proposals for changes.
Okay, a motion?
So move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, please? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And next, are we, James and Brian? Am I in the right place on?
Yep.
My request is very simple. I think the board, about four years ago appropriated money to Candlewick Sanitary, our sanitary district project, and that money has not been realized in the budget yet, so we're requesting this budget amendment to be approved. And just a quick update, we're hoping to close this out in the next month or two, so this money would help us wrap up the final project budget.
Any questions? Motion?
So move.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, okay? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposition? Okay, thank you. And I know we're as happy as you are to hear it's coming to an end. It's been a long haul. Oh, okay, I thought you had something attached to his too. Okay.
Basically, on, from the finance side, it's just a procedural step and?
Right. We got you. Okay, and welcome, Madam Chair.
Good evenings, good to be here again, Ms. Perkins Williams. It's good to have you back. We were praying for you while you were out, and it's good to see you back.
Good to be here.
I'm here this evening to talk about Fed Bed, the new Fed Bed contract. This was a contract that I entered into with Sumerall and Associates, I believe is the name of the negotiating company that facilitated the renegotiation of our Fed Bed contract. The previous rate was $78 a day, that has increased since the contract to $100 a day. The guard rate was at $28 a day, and that also increased to $30 a day. And it began October 1st, although it is the 14th today, it is retroactive, to go back and cover the overages or the difference from October 1st and forward.
I'd like to add that from the, once we, if you all approve the contract tonight, we will have to make a budget adjustment because that is new revenue that we can realize within our operating budget. We have two agenda items later, I'd like to go into more detail of where I think that adjustment would be a suitable place to put that additional revenue to help the sheriff and detention office by making this change from $78 to $100 a day.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please?
I, I want to understand what he just said.
I'm going to explain it in more detail, but basically, once we make the adjustment of the rate, that's new revenue that you all will have to accept to be part of the operating budget.
So the, the money goes into?
That's what he's going to cover, it'll go back into?
The county's budget?
Correct. We have to make the adjustment, and if you, if you approve the contract, we have to adjust the budget to accept that new revenue.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm telling you what I'm thinking about, because I think you said something earlier, or did I hear it tonight about body cameras?
Right, this, this is directly related to, this, this $210,000, $210 is what the sheriff referenced, the $78, $200 per day, in additional revenue that we expect through the last three quarters of the year, October 1st through June 30th. This is being booked, budgeted as additional revenue for the county, and it then will be dedicated to body cameras in another agenda item that Brian's going to talk about in a minute, on the expenditure side.
But that's what we're going to talk about next, that's what Brian was saying, he's going to talk about that at the next?
All right. Because I, I want to keep body cameras on, y'all know that's my hot item.
We, we voted on the, on the motion, right? Okay, thank you very much, okay?
Now, Brian? I thought you had a motion and a second, I didn't get your vote.
Oh, I thought we didn't, let's vote again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Brian?
Before we get to body cameras, as part of the sheriff's office and detention center and the legal department and the finance department all work together, we did bring in the Sumerall law firm to take a look at the federal rate. As part of their contract, once you approve the contract, then we, we do, are obligated to pay them for their service. We did budget for that in the prior fiscal year, so in order to, to make that payment, we have to reappropriate that money into this year, so we're going to move it out of fund balance and then make the payment to the Sumerall law group for their work in helping us to adjust the federal rate from $78 to $100.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, all in favor. And now?
$20,000, a lot of money. Good evening, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mr. Manager, just wanted to come before y'all tonight to give you an update on the body cameras. I come with good and bad news. After you, you give us the, the match and authorization to apply, we'd After you give us the match and authorization to apply, we did, that grant was for three-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand to BGA. Unfortunately, we were not awarded the full amount. We were awarded a hundred thousand dollars through BGA. But they have said if we're able to implement this and do in phases, it would not prohibit us from following through and reapplying for additional funds at a later date. So we do have a grant coming before you tonight, smaller than what we had looked. May put it into rolling out in phases, but other than that, I think we've been able to work, find some workarounds financially that's beneficial to the county. And with that, I'll turn it over to Brian.
So as Chief Carter alluded to, we did receive the grant for a hundred thousand dollars, which does require a match. When we came to you all with the original grant application, we did talk about the fact that the grant would not cover data storage, and we were going to use that as our matching portion. So the bad news is we didn't get the full amount, but the good news is because we just approved the rate adjustment for the federal inmates from seventy-eight dollars to a hundred dollars per day, that brings in two-hundred-and-ten thousand additional dollars that we can budget. My recommendation is to take a portion of that, a hundred thousand, and use that as the match, which will satisfy the grant requirement. My other recommendation is that does leave you with another a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars as part of the budget. My recommendation would be to combine that with the two-hundred thousand that is associated with the grant and roll it all together. This will give us the opportunity to look at funding, I believe it's eighty officers, in this fiscal year with cameras. It also covers the data storage. And then, as we move forward into, you technically cannot obligate it at this point, but we will through the budget process. Because we've made the adjustment in the rate, that is additional revenue that I feel very confident that we can use to fund the other forty officers that the sheriff originally wanted to outfit. If you look at it from a calendar year standpoint, I believe the sheriff's office is looking to start January one. That'd give us six months this fiscal year, and then they're looking to have all a hundred-and-twenty fully equipped by the end of next fiscal year. So by looking at it over a two fiscal year period, I believe that we can do all a hundred-and-twenty officers, twelve spare, cover all equipment and data storage without any additional cost to the county or the sheriff's budget internally. And that will give us a little wiggle room in case they bring on any new officers, well, if any equipment is broken. I think we can fully implement body cameras.
And that is very, very good news. I don't know what's going on with my voice, I apologize. But we need a motion or any questions?
About when?
January first would be the first, they'd implement the first eighty, and then by July first, they'd have all a hundred-and-twenty.
Twenty, twenty?
Yes.
Motion to approve, Madam Sheriff.
Okay, and a yeoman's job on this, all in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, and next, we have our appointments, Mr. Manager?
Yes, for the Pitt County Farm and Field Council, I have a recommendation to appoint Dr. John Silverneal, Silver, Silverneal to replace Dr. Don Morrow, who is retired.
So is it a motion? Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, let's vote, please. Okay, and our next one is the Shepherd Memorial Library Board.
Yes, the library director, Greg Needham, is recommending Dr. Terry Adkensen to replace Mr. Jesse Sutton, Hinton on the library board.
Say a motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Let's vote, please. Okay, and our next item of business is our closed session. Madam Attorney?
Yes, it has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen point one-one A three, under attorney-client privilege, under A four, to discuss matters relating to economic development, under A one, to review closed session minutes, and under A six, to review a matter relating to personnel.
Okay, a motion to go into closed session?
So move.
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor? Okay?
Welcome back, this right, Commissioner White, if you will, you have a motion for us?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the closed session minutes from September 23rd and October 4th.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, that passes. We will now, we'll start with you, Tom.
No comment.
Any comments, Chris?
I'd like to thank the residents of Pitt County and my district for their prayers and their best wishes cards and everything during my illness, and thank God I'm healing well.
Yes, welcome back.
Thank you.
Alex.
No comment.
Mike?
No comment.
A motion to adjourn?
No move.
Okay, motion to adjourn, and we'll count that as a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much.